Excellent, looks like we're good to go. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, Counsel. Counselor Mackey. Just, just let me know.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Gamble. Counselor Burley. Counselor Carlton. Counselor McQueen sends his regrets. Counselor Little.
Present.
You. Counselor Desai.
Present.
Counselor Patterson. Warden Hicks.
Here.
Counselor Columbus. Counselor Kivany. Counselor Body. Counselor O'Leary.
Present.
Counselor Woodbury. Counselor Millen. Counselor Soever. Counselor Bordenial.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Present.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
Thank you. We have all members in attendance with the exception of Counselor McQueen. Counselor Little is attending on his behalf. And we have Counselors Little, Desai, O'Leary, Bordenial, Robinson, and Hutchinson attending virtually.
So, good morning to all. And welcome, Counselor Little, again. Okay, we're going to turn next to the land acknowledgement. So, we acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality, and culture of the Ania Shinnabeck, the Six Nations of the Grand River, the Howden Ashani, and the Wendot, Windot, Wyandot peoples on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We also recognize the Metis and the Inuit whose ancestors shared these lands and these waters. May we all, as treaty people, live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all of its diverse peoples. Okay, so before I call for the, well, first of all, is there any declaration of interest pecuniary or otherwise? I do not see any hands. If one should arise during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. Counsel, I'm just going to give you a warning or a heads up that I'm going to be a little bit pushy today. And I apologize in advance. We have a very heavy agenda. And I'm going to be trying to strike a balance between good, robust debate and trying to move on with our, our day as well. Okay? So, the first item is item 6A, County Council and Committee of the Home Minutes, which are dated March 10th. I need a mover. The seconder moved by Counselor Carlton, seconded by Counselor Boardignon. Counselor Mill. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I would propose that a resolution CW 39-22 related to supplemental taxation contributions be separated from the minutes and deferred until after the presentation of CAO R-CC-03-22. I would so move.
My apologies. I need a seconder for that. Seconded by Counselor Desai. Sorry, I'm looking at two sets here. I'll get you next. Is there any discussion on that motion? And I'll call the question. Although, sorry, discussion, sir? Counselor Soever?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be opposed to that because I think, you know, that was in the minutes. And anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Point. For sure. A recorded vote has been requested for those people. Might not have heard that. Counselor Desai, you have a question about the recorded vote or about?
No, I point out discussion if I could.
Oh, sure. Right ahead.
Thank you. Counselor Soever mentioned that he would, he's opposed to this because it's already in the minutes. I would like to draw his attention to the fact that there has been a number of things that we have pulled out of the minutes and voted on separately because things had changed between when they were initially voted on and when there was pulled. So, it's not, I mean, he's free to have his reasons for voting against it. I just do want to point out to other members of council that this is not in, and it is not contrary to any procedural bylaw.
Just turn myself off. Are there any other comments or debate on the motion to pull the one item? If not, then I'll turn things over to our clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. We are voting on the motion to defer resolution related to supplemental assessment until after the presentation of the report from the CIO and our treasurer. Because we have people attending virtually, those around council chambers, I will just reiterate your vote so that the members attending virtually can hear. I understand that was an issue the last time. Counselor Mackey.
In favor.
Counselor Mackey votes in favor. Counselor Gamble. Counselor Gamble is in favor. Counselor Burley. Counselor Burley is in favor. Counselor Carlton. Counselor Carlton is in favor. Counselor Little.
In favor.
Counselor Little is in favor. Counselor Desai.
In favor.
Counselor Desai is in favor. Counselor Patterson. Counselor Patterson is in favor. Warden Hicks.
Yay.
Warden Hicks is in favor. Counselor Columbus. Counselor Columbus is in favor. Counselor Kivany. Counselor Kivany is in favor. Counselor Body. Counselor Body is in favor. Counselor O'Leary.
In favor.
Counselor O'Leary is in favor. Counselor Woodbury. Counselor Woodbury is in favor. Counselor Millen. Counselor Millen is in favor. Counselor Soever. Counselor Soever is opposed. Counselor Bordenial.
Opposed.
Counselor Bordenial is opposed. Counselor Robinson.
In favor.
Counselor Robinson is in favor. Counselor Hutchinson.
In favor.
Counselor Hutchinson is in favor. The motion is carried 77 to 13. So, that motion will come back following the report on the council's agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so now we're on the main motion, I guess, as amended?
Yes.
Okay, we had a mover and seconder already for that, correct? Thank you very much. Okay, so is there any discussion on the main motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, so next, we're going to deal with item 6B, which is a Long Term Care Committee of Management Minutes, which are dated March 15th. I'm looking for mover and seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Columbus. Oh, sorry. I got the name wrong again. My head is just, yeah, no, I got it right. Columbus, yeah. I've even got stickers up here, folks, trying to get things right. I apologize, Counselor Columbus. Seconded by, I'm looking for someone online. Counselor Robinson. Okay. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is carried. Thank you very much. Item 6C is the Long Term Care Redevelopment Task Force Minutes, which are dated March 17th. That's been moved by Counselor Robinson. And I'm looking for a seconder. Counselor Woodbury, seconds. Is there any discussion on, oh, yeah, sorry, this is the one that we're going to have a presentation. So, I turn things over to our CIO, Kim Windgrove. She's just going to take a second to go to the podium.
And today feels like a bit of a watershed moment for Gray County as we seek council confirmation of the unanimous decision that was taken by the Long Term Care Redevelopment Task Force to move forward with the redevelopment of the Rockwood Terrace site. This morning's presentation is a slightly updated version of the one that was presented to the Redevelopment Task Force last Thursday. And there are a number of staff who'll take part this morning, but we want to make sure that you get your questions answered. And we thank you for the opportunity to present this information to, to everyone. So, the project status, as noted on the slide, the project continues to be well managed by Colliers, our, our project management company. And the timeline to complete the project remains the summer of 2025. Kazian Architects has undertaken extensive consultation with our own staff, with residents in the family council, and with various subject matter experts to provide an overall layout for the site as well as a preliminary design for the long-term care home. The county is overseeing the necessary reports for site plan completion and the necessary planning work to move the project forward. As required by the project management contract, a cost consultant, Turner and Townsend, was retained to provide a preliminary or Class D cost estimate for the project, which, as they note, is accurate to plus or minus 20 to 30% at this early stage. As the work continues to develop more detailed designs, these costings will be further refined. Class B, Class C, all the way to Class A, and the Class A most accurate costing will be the one that will be part of the construction tender if we continue on with the design bid build process that we currently contemplate. The task force and the, and council will need to approve that final costing and the release of the tender before the project moves forward. So, as part of the work to get to this point, we also asked another division of Colliers to examine the potential of doing a P3 or public-private partnership and whether there was going to be merit or value to the county for undertaking that. So, we will talk about that at the end of this presentation. Colliers did provide detailed analysis of net operating and capital requirements for the models that will be provided, will be considering today. For now, the consultants require direction on the overall scope of work that they should move forward with and confirmation of the project and procurement model that we're going to use. So, I'm going to take you, this is the proposed site plan, and I apologize that it's a little bit small to read. But you can see the way the site is laid out. And just to kind of help to orient you, the existing Rockwood Terrace is, would be off the top of the page and to the right-hand side. To the left at the top is the elementary school. To the far left off the page would be the curling club, et cetera, in Durham. So, that's kind of where we are at. And you can see that they've got four things numbered on here. Number one is the long-term care home. So, 128 beds more than, which the current Rockwood Terrace, as you remember, is 100. So, 128 beds, two-story building, and 98,000 square feet for that. And then directly in front of it, so fronting on those street extensions, this is South Street that runs in front of the extension, South Street that runs in front of this. You've got a three-story building. The first floor is what we'll be referring to as the Village Square. And that is 20,000 square feet of retail and commercial space. Above that are two floors that will be used to house 40 units of assisted living. And that's roughly 46,000 square feet up there. Rounding out a full campus of care is building four, to the left, a three-story, 60-unit apartment building, just over 60,000 square feet. And the current plan would see that as 45 units of market rent and 15 affordable seniors apartments. So, the questions that we need to answer that we approach the Redevelopment Task Force about are, what is the scope of the project that you want to move forward with? The long-term care only, long-term care assisted living in the Village Square building? Or a full campus of care that includes those seniors apartment? Second, as I've already mentioned, what's the procurement model that you want to use? We're contracted with Colliers and Kazian for a design bid build or what they call the stipulated some contract. Do we want to move to a P3? And that P3 model is available to us depending on the scope of the project. So, thinking about how best to determine the scope, and we did work through this with Colliers and amongst our staff team here, but trying to determine what would best meet the needs of the residents and the staff. Can we eliminate or change aspects but still maintain the quality that we want in a final product? What's the impact to the overall construction plan and the design if we choose one option over another? What can we afford? What are the final in financial impacts of delaying the independent living or seniors apartments because they're a separate building unto themselves? So, I wanted to spend a little bit of time on the key features in the long-term care design because a tremendous amount of work has gone into this. And I think it's important that you understand this. It plays a role in the costing. So, I'm going to let Jen come up and speak to that because really her team in the midst of COVID and everything else have devoted many, many hours talking with our consultants. So, Jen, if you would.
Thank you. And through you, Warden Hicks. And so, as CIO Windgrove said, there was extensive engagement over the past number of months, including residents, families, team members, and leaders. Kazian patiently guided us through discussions to, and to decisions about the design that we're going to talk about just now. They asked many, many questions, helping to tease out the priorities for each of those groups involved. So, in looking at room design, the design that is proposed today really features resident privacy, affording residents their own individual space. Okay?
I don't know if the people attending online can hear.
The screen.
We're having some issues, some technical issue.
The audio is fine. It's just the video.
Okay, so it looks like we're back up and running again. So, the folks online should be able to hear everything. Jen, back to you.
Thank you. Warden Hicks, should I just start, should I just pick up where I was or would it be best to do a quick recap? Yes, do, yes. Okay. Take two. Thank you, Warden Hicks. So, as CIO Windgrove mentioned, extensive engagement took place over the past number of months that included residents, family members, team members, and leaders. Kazian Architects patiently guided us through discussions to get us to decisions about design, helping us tease out the priorities that were important to each of the various groups. The design that's in front of us today speaks to four areas that I wanted to just highlight as priority. So, in room design, resident privacy was a significant priority to all involved. And the room design provides individual space even for a basic rate accommodation. So, there, there will be two levels of rooms in this design. Basic rate, which would be each resident has their own individual space with a shared washroom in between. And then private rooms, where the resident has their own private room and their own private washroom. This design supports infection prevention and control practices, supports isolation requirements in the case of an outbreak. It supports the, the limiting of the transmission of odor and sounds. So, those are visual, and, and as well as visual privacy is supported by minimizing shared sightlines. So, for example, one resident can't see into the washroom where another resident is in that space. Additionally, people going by down the hallway can't see in while residents are getting care in the, in this design. Staff safety is also supported in this design in, for example, that there is additional space or enough space on either side of the toilet to provide support where there's perhaps two staff supporting or one side is a best support than the other. Dining room enhancements is another area that we spent a lot of time talking about. This design proposes a larger dining room space that's modified to support two smaller dining spaces. So, each resident home area provides home for 32 residents. And the home is, the home area is divided into two pods of 16. And there is lots of evidence that, that shows that that smaller grouping enhances the life experience. It still supports community feeling and engagement and socialization, but minimizes the, the amount of noise inter, the kind of overwhelming social interactions that might come from hanging out with 32 people all at the same time. And so, the dining space provides a little bit of extra space so that there's two small groupings of 16 residents eating together. It also supported additional space for the safe storage of wheelchairs and walkers. And for anyone who uses or relies on a device to support their ambulation and their mobility, it becomes a part of who they are. And it can be very concerning when you get to your seat and your walker is whisked away and you're not sure where it is. And you want to be able to access it easily. And so, this was something that was really important to the residents and to the staff. Infection control goes without saying. We've spent the last 26 or so months talking about infection control, containment of disease, infectious diseases. And we wanted to make sure that there was enough discussion about how to support safe practices for the residents, for their family members and their visitors, as well as for the staff. Some examples in this design are the laundry system. It's called a barrier system. And it's distinct separation of contaminated on, dirty, contaminated on one side and clean on the other in a, in a separate room. As I mentioned, in room design, the infection prevention and control in rooms is more easily supported in that there's less crossover of residents going into other residence spaces to get to somewhere they need to go. And finally, laundry shoots are included in the design, which minimizes the contaminated laundry being carried throughout the building. And finally, possibly most important is the community feeling. And this was discussed in every category. So, it didn't matter what topic we were talking about. We applied the lens of community and home-like feeling and what was important. So, this design features nooks and seating alcoves for residents to gather for visits with each other and/or with their visitors, both inside as well as outdoors. It provides cognitive stimulation stations and few to no dead ends. So, there's natural walking paths throughout the home areas and throughout the building so that it supports people who want to go out for a walk. But it also minimizes the, the case of residents going out for a walk and ending up in someone else's room. The design has no bedrooms at the end of the walking paths. And that's something that if you move into a congregate setting, you want your space to be yours and you want to feel like it's yours and other people aren't coming in. And, and, and design is a great way to support that naturally. And then finally, natural walking routes that support residents, as I said, that enjoy wandering with no resident, oh, I just said that. And then finally, the outdoor space is also features a lot of community gathering opportunities with gardens, opportunities for gardens, both vegetable, flower, people watching, natural gathering spaces, and really bringing that community feeling together. So, that's my summary of the featured priority points, and I'm happy to take any questions if there are any or pass it back to you. Okay.
Thanks so much, Jen.
Oh.
Yep.
For the folks that are joining us, the members that are joining us online, I can't see you while we're having a presentation. So, my plan was to hold questions until the very end, when I could see everyone. But Counselor Mackey, I can see you here. Do you mind holding until the end? I know I couldn't. All right, back to you, Kim.
Thank you and thanks, Jen. Moving on. So, the first option that, that the task force considered was the long-term care only option. And this, this option is the part that we are more or less committed to. As, as you're well aware, under the terms of Rockwood Terrace's operating license, it needs to be redeveloped by 2025. The projected costs have risen by a third from the feasibility stage to the Class D cost estimate. So, the net operating and capital annual contribution required to support this option is 5.3 million. The cost to build the long-term care home alone is $75.3 million. This option includes some higher upfront costs that are carried across the other two options because under this option, we're servicing the whole site. So, all of the road extensions, the hydro, the gas, the water, and wastewater are all being brought onto the site so that if the decision is not to proceed with anything more than the long-term care, those other options are available to us. I think it's simply more, a more efficient way of moving forward. This is a greenfield site. It's visually and physically isolated. And so, the question of whether or not this is the best option for us to proceed with is really one about our ability to attract residents and staff and to make this feel like the community that, that Jen has just mentioned. The current design that I showed a couple of slides back is based on the integration of long-term care assisted living in the Village Square. So, if we proceeded only with long-term care, I think we'd have to make, have some real conversations with our consultants about what it was that we were doing. We would only be creating a shell of that other part of the building, would be leaving it entirely. Either way, those future renovations are likely to be costly and it's difficult to know exactly what additional cost we might incur. It would also be very disruptive. And one of the other things that we've asked the consultants to do is prepare a design that's either net zero compliant or net zero ready. When you think about our climate change obligations and, and just our desire to manage our costs in the future, that will be more difficult if the building envelope is developed in stages. So, moving on from there, the second option is really that building that you saw that was 123. That's the long-term care assisted living in Village Square. At 108.5 million of estimated private. At one hundred and eight point five million of estimated project cost, it's forty-four percent more than the long-term care build alone. But it does include those assisted living suites and the retail and food tenant space. So due to that additional revenue, the annual cost is only about eleven point eight percent more than long-term care alone. It provides a broader scope of services and amenities, enhances the quality experience for residents, staff, and the families who visit them. It facilitates the construction of a single building envelope and achieving those net zero targets that we've talked about and eliminates the disruption of a future renovation. The full campus of care that adds that a separate apartment building, one hundred and forty million dollar price tag is the estimate at this time. So it's eighty-five percent more than doing long-term care alone. And annual operating net is about fifteen point six percent more again than just option two. The the borrowing required to facilitate this option takes us very, very close to the county's debt ceiling under our policy. We also know that apart the apartment building could be completed in the future with little impact to the existing buildings and residents. And given the focus on affordable housing and rental housing, there may be future funding that we could access that might help to defray some of those those costs. So now I'm going to let you talk to the expert on county finances, Mary Lou.
Thank you, Kim. So the first topic there is the county borrowing limit. So of course, we've talked previously about the annual repayment limit, which is twenty-five percent of own source revenue. County policy that was passed in two thousand and twenty recommended a ten percent limit. The municipal affairs financial indicator review currently shows us in a low category because we're less than five percent of debt servicing as a percentage of total revenue. They classify a moderate is to the five to ten percent range and a high is greater than ten percent. So we've talked previously about the number of initiatives that the the county has looked at and what that would do by committing to a adventure of twenty-five years. So we have existing commitments to future capital projects. We have a a number of initiatives, whether it's the affordable housing, the the cost for maintaining the infrastructure that we currently have. The amount that we're putting away for health sector funding. And the just to to highlight in the tenure capital forecast, the one that was presented for two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and thirty-one had two hundred and forty-six million dollars in levy dollars required over ten years. And as expected, seventy percent of this is for transportation services and twenty-three percent for human services, which is housing, long-term care, paramedic services, social services, childcare services. Given significant cost increases, we're going to need to do some work and really look, take a hard look at the tenure capital forecast this year. Both from a term of looking at the cost of projects as well as what is our ability to undertake these. So the hard work really is what is, you know, from risk management, your health and safety issues, and what are the the corporate priorities? So when you look at option one, with the long-term care only, that's a two point two eight percent levy increase. Option two at five point six one and the full campus of care at an eight point two nine percent. And just to make a comment that, you know, whatever decision you make, we would look at phasing that increase in over a number of years. Until we get to the amount required for what we anticipate is the adventure payment. Because the the amount that we've been putting forward as a transfer to reserve of one million three hundred and sixty-one thousand, that was the formerly mannered adventure payment, isn't enough. And back then, between two thousand and five and two thousand and six, over two adventures, we debentured just less than eleven million dollars.
Thanks, Mary Lou. Just about wrapped up here. On the good side, there are some assets that the county controls that we have the opportunity to try and maximize the value and hopefully defray some of the investment that's going to be required here. There is an adjacent twenty-two acre site to this ten acres that the long-term care facility is going to occupy. There's the potential to either sell or develop and sell that site. The existing Rockwood Terrace site is not part of this, so there's again an opportunity there to do something with that property. There is another affordable housing. That's the right word. Property that the county owns in Durham. When the when the new apartments are built, there's an opportunity then to sell that property. Now, though those the proceeds of that sale would need to go back into housing property. You can't take housing money and move it elsewhere, but at least it would be something toward those apartments in the future. And then finally, we're aware that Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus is actively working to ask the province to provide consideration for greater long-term care construction funding. So we can lend our assistance to that effort through Western Ontario Wardens Caucus and AML to really see that where the at one time that provincial contribution to the construction subsidy was somewhere north of forty percent. It's much closer to thirty percent right now, given the increases that we've seen in construction costs over the relatively short term. So this is something, these other sources of revenue and our ability to maximize, these are something that Randy and I are really committed to. Will want to work hard to see what we can do with that. And we we simply haven't been to that place yet, but we do believe that there's some potential there. So the last piece of the presentation for this morning was really about the procurement option. If you hadn't a chance to look at the staff report, there's significant detail there. Thank you, Michael, around the considerations of going into a public-private partnership. It's not a place the county's been in the past. It really requires a carefully crafted contract between the county and the private partner. That contract would be need to be managed. You're you're into a long-term relationship with someone and there, as we've already seen in long-term care, there can be times where adjustments need to be made to the facility. And those public expectations about the fact that you're on top of those things and they happen quickly, aren't very flexible. Your partner would need to be as motivated as you are. I it's difficult to write a contract that that can provide that level of assurance. As well, the operating and maintenance aspect of a P three that would go on for the life of the of the agreement kind of turns over every five to ten years. So where you start might not be where you end up ten or fifteen years in. And sometimes getting out of these things is very expensive. So there just seems to be a lot of uncertainty. It would require additional resources here and they were able to find the consultants were able to find one other example where this had been done. It was in the foundland and they were able to gain about a ten percent saving by doing this. Given where we are and the amount of uncertainty, as as staff, we're not really recommending that's an option, a good option for us. So that's the end of the presentation. And as I say, that we were grateful to the task force for all of their consideration. They asked a lot of excellent questions. In the end, it was voted unanimously that we would proceed with option two, which is the long-term care village square and assisted living. And staff and I are answer any other questions that I might not have covered this morning. So thank you.
So thank you very much, Kim and Jen and Mary Lou. We'll turn now for questions and discussion from council. Council Mackey, we'll start with you. Knowing that you had a question.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Probably more of a comment than a question. First, like to thank Kim and Jennifer and all the the senior management with long-term care and the staff for the the work going into the the new design. I think all the members of the redevelopment were really impressed with the amount of time and effort and thought that was put into it to make a better, you know, place to live for people, infection control, you know, all those measures that were were taken into consideration. Probably as someone that was beaten the band all the time around a campus of care. I still believe that that opportunity is there up the road. But, you know, based on the finances, you know, the committee certainly had really good discussions about what can we afford right now? Having the ability to have assisted living on the same site, I think, was probably a compromise for some members of the committee. I think everyone knows that we've all had different views on on where we should go with long-term care and how much more we should get involved with. But at the end of the day, as Kim mentioned, we were all unanimously in favor of of going with option two, which, you know, was a compromise. Kim did mention that Randy and his team are looking at the potentials of that site development. And up the road, there certainly could be the opportunity for, you know, condominiums or or other aging in place type facilities that could utilize and piggyback off of what was that. So anyways, you know, sitting on both long-term care redevelopment and the committee of management, I really appreciate the amount of information that Jennifer has provided and the other executive directors. And just feel that we're all in a lot better position to make decisions and I certainly support. You know, the number two and, you know, as Kim mentioned, we talked in depth about the private partnership and, you know, giving up or maybe a ten percent savings and giving up the control and how to thus go forward. The committee didn't think that the potential ten percent was worth losing the control that the county has now in their long-term care facilities. Thanks, Mr. Ward.
Very much, Council Mackey. Council Robinson, you'll be next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And through you, I do want to thank all of staff and the consultants and certainly the long-term care redevelopment task force for their diligence, due diligence. And expert questions that were brought forward during the the planning, designing phase and also the the discussion that we had with regard to options one, two, and three. Certainly, this is a, as our CIO had identified, a watershed moment, but certainly a significant moment for Gray County in terms of developing a a long-term care home that has enhancements to the quality of life and also the community feeling for Gray County residents. This is a an opportunity where we are able to look at all the the new standards and everything that has been learned through the other order, other orders of government and certainly Gray County for quality of life of residents in terms of privacy, infection control, recreation, leisure activities, and just overall community life. And it certainly was a a grand discussion many times at our long-term care redevelopment meetings. And we sought collaboration and ended on a unanimous recommendation that is before county council today. And I would encourage county council colleagues to support the recommendation and the the motion at hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Robinson. Don't see any other hands. Oh, I apologize, Councilor Silver.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Ward. So I'm I'm a bit surprised that as we go in more into the campus of care, that the net the net costs go up. Throughout Ontario, long-term care companies as well as municipalities that run long-term care prefer the campus care model because it generates revenue and therefore the net cost goes down. So I'm a bit surprised that our analysis shows that the campus of care has the biggest tax hit on us because why would then private companies prefer a campus of care as it makes them more money? So, you know, there's just something, you know, that I struggle to understand there is when the industry is going one way. And our and our analysis shows that our net cost and our burden on taxation is the opposite of what the industry is going. And certainly, the industry would not be going toward campus care models if they were less attractive. The other thing I am concerned about is the cost has gone up substantially. Looking at the presentation, it's now up to five hundred and eighty-eight thousand per bed or seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars per square foot, taking the ninety-eight thousand square foot building and just dividing by the total cost of that. And also, the assisted living would come in at seven hundred and twenty-one dollars a square foot, which compared to projects that have been recently announced as late as October two thousand and twenty-one. The extended care in Sitsville was coming in that quite a bit less than that. Two hundred and ninety-eight thousand per bed and four hundred and ninety dollars per square foot all in. Now, to be fair, that is a bigger bigger project. It's two hundred and fifty-six beds. So there is some economies of scale there. Most projects now are looking at a hundred and sixty beds or a hundred and ninety-two as those seem to be the more economic models. So I'm concerned about the cost and I am a little surprised that the the campus of care is less attractive when the industry seems to be thinking the opposite. So those are my comments. And the other the other thing concerned I would have is it was mentioned in the presentation that it is, you know, remote site. And, you know, one of the issues that we face in the town of Blue Mountains, of course, is attainable housing for staff. Hundred and twenty-eight bed unit would require a hundred and twenty-eight staff roughly. So, you know, is there the attainable housing nearby to accommodate the staff? That is why when we were putting out our RFP for our campus of care that we're asking private developers to bid in in the town of Blue Mountains, we are including attainable housing on the site because we do think the competition for staff will be very important in the future. Unless there's a huge change in the salary levels of long-term care staff. Given what we're seeing happening to housing prices throughout Gray County, more so in our end, but it's coming this way for sure. There will be a squeeze on, you know, where can these people live? And I think, you know, that's something we need to consider that we are creating, you know, the need for a hundred and twenty-eight attainable homes when we create this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sir Madam CEO. Did you want to add anything to that?
Through you, Mr. Warden. At two things, with regard to the financial impacts. Net operating income. Under all three scenarios, there this facility will operate in a deficit position. Long-term care alone at one point seven million. The option two model is about seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollars annually. And the full campus of care shows a deficit position of about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. So there's really is a significant difference. And so councillor, so ever, is correct that there is a benefit to including those other aspects of a campus of care. The corollary to that is the cost of construction, the additional costs that are required to build it to begin with. And so you have annual debt. And so you have annual debt service costs that range from the long-term care alone at 3.3 million up to 6.3 million for the full campus of care. So that's where that bottom line impact comes in and and how we get to the deficit that Mary Lou mentioned in her slides. With regard to housing, attracting housing and having housing for staff, we're fortunate that we have a good staff complement working at Rockwood Terrace now. And I think Jen and her team do their level best every single day to retain the staff that we have and to grow that staff pool. But again, this is a consideration when we think about what might be done with some of those adjacent properties that the county controls. Can we look to putting in some hot housing that would be attractive for the staff that might work for us in the future?
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Little, I believe you had your hand up at some point.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I hope this isn't an over, I'm, I'm afraid it might be oversimplifying the question, but the difference between option two and option three was covered fairly quickly, but from the site plan, it looked as if to me, it looked as if the apartment building seniors residence over to the the north appeared to be the major difference, if not the only difference between option two and option three. And I'm just wondering if if I am oversimplifying or if that is indeed the difference. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I would say it's the building and the and the parking associated with that particular building are there are really the two key differences. Randy, did you, you have, that's, yeah, yeah.
Anything else, Counselor Little?
Just thinking about then if that is one of the major difference in looking at the P3 opportunity, which doesn't seem to be in the best interests of of the county, but perhaps if we were going with option two, then delaying that other part and perhaps availing ourselves of a of a P3 relationship might might be part of our consideration. Thank you.
Okay. I do not see hands online. I do not see hands in the room. Oh, there is a hand, Counsel Burley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm very proud to be part of a task force committee that were united in our insistence on this very important issue to move the county forward. And I'm going to ask for a recorded vote on this issue, please.
Thank you. Very good. I think it is time to call the question. So I'll turn things over to our clerk.
Mr. Warden. No, I'll, I'll provide that. So you are voting on the minutes of the Long-Term Care Redevelopment Committee from March 17th and the resolutions contained therein. Okay, Counsel Mackey. Nope, just tell me. Counsel Mackey's in favor. Counsel Gamble? Counsel Gamble is in favor. Counsel Burley? Counsel Burley is in favor. Counsel Carlton? Counsel Carlton is in favor. Counsel Little?
In favor.
Counsel Little is in favor. Counsel Desai?
In favor.
Counsel Desai is in favor. Counsel Patterson? Counsel Patterson is in favor. Warden Hicks?
Yay.
Warden Hicks is in favor. Counsel Columbus? Counsel Columbus is in favor. Counsel Keveney? Counsel Keveney is in favor. Counsel Body? Counsel Body is in favor. Counsel O'Leary?
In favor.
Counsel O'Leary is in favor. Counsel Woodbury? Counsel Woodbury is in favor. Counsel Millen? Counsel Millen is in favor. Counsel Silver? Counsel Silver is opposed. Counsel Bourdignan?
Opposed.
I'm sorry, sir, opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. Counsel Robinson?
In favor.
Counsel Hutchinson?
In favor.
Sorry, Counsel Robinson and Counsel Hutchinson voted in favor. The motion is carried 77 to 13.
Very good. Thank you very much. It's a big decision. Okay, we're moving next to item 6D, which is the Long-Term Care Committee of Management Close Meeting Minutes, which are dated March 15, 2022. I need a mover, please. Moved by Counsel Burley, seconded by Counselor Hutchinson. Is there any discussion on that? Oh, we, yeah, we have to close. That's right. My apologies. Okay, I'll just call the question then. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thank you. We have no closed meeting matters. We're on to item 8A, which is the Board of Health Minutes dated February 4, 2022. Need a mover, please? Counsel Patterson, seconded by Counselor O'Leary. See him? Oh, over on the side. Dr. Aaron, you're with us?
Yes, Mr. Warden.
Excellent. I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you. Mr. Warden, I recognize your, your initial note of limited time this meeting based on the amount of work or workload in the meeting. I'll, I'll be precise because of that. We had three highlights from our last meeting. The first one is the approval of the budget for 2022. And the budget had two main components completely covered. First one is the response to COVID, continuing monitoring and response in case there is a surge or waning immunity requires mass immunization. All these expenses are factored in. The second one is the recovery and ramping up of all the public health programs. And there's a long list there. The next item can cover some of them. The, the I trust it will be good news for the county and municipalities that all these expenses require no additional county funding. And I trust that it is welcome news as, as we know, the municipalities have been through challenges financially during the pandemic and every organization efforts to, to be efficient counts. The second item in the board meeting was about building brand for public health locally. And there is good news there that people will will hear about over the coming year as part of this strategic plan to build a brand or augment the portfolio of public health. And the main item in the board meeting was the strategic direction. And I wonder if I get your permission to share one slide, it will make the even shorter presentation and save some time.
All right, ahead.
So this slide shows the one-year plan, the three-year plan, and the 15-year plan. The one-year plan, as I mentioned, it will have continuing monitoring and response to COVID. If there is a need for rollout of vaccine nationalization, we are ready for it without even the declaration of emergency. I, I believe all these resources have rapidly cramped up. The recovery require ramping up public health program, school immunization, catch-up dental and others. For the three-year plan, rural mental health and substance use, opiate emergency is key. There are a list of other strategic directions that we can definitely monitor. And in the 15-year plan, this Center of Excellence for Public Health. And it is our northern star metric in the planning for management for, for strategic direction and the operations of the health unit. And that's worth mentioning in the one-year plan, the last item here. We pivoted to, unfortunately, during the war in Ukraine, there, there, there is a potential to have newcomers to Canada and to our area and how we can position ourselves for success to support these individuals when they arrive. We, we've already pivoted to start planning for that. That's my update. Mr. Warden, Council open to questions as always.
Thank you very much, Dr. Aaron. I didn't mean to rush you. Looks like my words were effective scaring people, so. Questions or comments from anyone around the horseshoe or online? I do not see any hands up, Dr. Aaron. Thank you very much for your update.
Thank you.
And I know that Counsel Patterson has already informed me that she does not have an extra update. So with that said, it's perhaps time to call the question on the motion before us. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? That is carried. I'm going to suggest we take a break now and come back, let's say, at 10:15. Excuse me, 11:15. Sharp. We'll see you all then. Call us back together, please. We have a quorum. Excellent. We're now dealing with item seven, excuse me, eight B, which is consideration of redirection of supplemental assessment. I need a mover in second to put the motion to receive a report for information on the floor moved by Counselor Columbus. Columbus. And seconded by Counselor Woodbury. There will be a report. Yes. No worries. Terrick, can you change the slide for me? Thanks. So this is in response to the notice of motion that would direct the county to return to any municipal, member municipality, the county's portion of the supplemental assessment revenue that exceeds the amount budgeted. So the this particular member municipality, if they have surplus, would receive these funds in addition to the $20,000 that's provided in the 2022 economic development budget for the respective community improvement plan. So there's a few impacts to consider. So reallocating the supplemental supplemental assessment changes the year-end financial position of the county. So if we have surplus as we had in 2020, we don't have the 2021 numbers currently. That money goes to the one-time funding reserve to offset a variety of projects. If it creates a shortfall, we would need to fund from a transfer from a reserve to balance the budget. Yeah, it wouldn't currently comply with our existing tax and reserve policies that set out what happens to surplus deficit and the thresholds for various reserves, et cetera. So if we create some new policy, we would have to enter into an agreement probably with MTE to receive some consulting assistance in changing our process for how we would budget for supplemental assessment. It also will have an impact on the long-term, long-term financial plans I mentioned. The money goes to reserve and we use it for similar purposes as the member municipalities and the other county treasurers that I surveyed. Transfers to the one-time funding reserve would be curtailed. And so there would be less flexibility to smooth spikes in the levy or to allocate reserves to a critical project. So talking about the assessment role. So there's changes that occur in the assessment role for a number of reasons and MPAC updates it as it receives information from municipalities. So supplemental is just one component. So that's occurs from changes in the state use or condition of a property, whether it's an addition to a home, it's a renovation, it's a brand-new home, changes in tax class, something that moves from one class to another, changing a what the exemption is. There's other things that also impact the role. So requests for reconsideration. So those most often result in a write-off. And just commenting that subs are different from growth. Omitted assessment is another one, for example. So it's assessment that should have occurred for the current year or any part of the previous two years. I've just mentioned write-offs can be demolitions, it can be a result of reconsideration. And supplemental is just one component of the taxation collected by member municipalities on behalf of the county. So when we budget for tax revenue, we take the following factors into consideration. So the one which is presented on the Excel slide in the budget is the 2021 growth. That's provided from MPAC's returned role at year end. And it's the actual growth that occurred in 2021. So comparing it from the end value by MPAC at 2020 to the end value in 2021, and it's not an estimate by county staff. When the returned role is finalized in December, that's the number. Supplemental assessment in the budget is estimated using a combination of two factors. There's a preliminary new assessment forecast report that we get from MPAC and we compare that against the average of the five previous years. And then we also look at the risk of write-offs. So the assessment at risk from significant appeals. And that's estimated based on information that MTE prepares for us. So the net revenue included in the 2022 budget. The Excel slide in the budget shows the assessment growth, which is from the returned role from MPAC at just under 1.2 million. We budgeted for just over a million in supplementary. There's payments in lieu of taxes of just over $10,000. So that's 2.248 mil. And then we have write-offs that we've budgeted of just over 667,000. So there's a net budgeted revenue of 1.6 million dollars. Then we talk about how taxation is used that comes in excess of budget. So at year end, the funds are transferred to the one-time funding reserve. And funds also come into this reserve from another of other sources such as year-end surplus. And we use the funds for a variety of initiatives. So it might be assisting with pressures in their county operations that are running a shortfall in the current year. Providing funding for projects that exceed budget or are unbudgeted undertakings in the current year. So we have a delegation that comes and asks for funding for something. We would say that we're going to take it from surplus from the or from the one-time funding reserve. We could have a significant project that comes in over budget. How are we going to fund that? One-time funding reserve. And then we also use it to fund initiatives in the future year. An example for this year, of course, is the contribution of Georgian College of a million dollars. The money that's being taken out this year from the one-time funding reserve to assist with the grading and stone dusting the county trail network. And the money that was used in the 2021 budget where we took one, one percent, which was $630,000 roughly from the one-time funding reserve and transferred it to the affordable housing reserve. And it's also used for other corporate purposes that's identified the council. As I mentioned, I did a little survey of what others do. The county treasurers that responded indicated they budget for subs and write-offs based on comparing with the five years previous actuals. And as we do, any surplus is used for in-year deficits or transferred to a stabilization reserve. The member municipality treasurers that responded indicated surplus typically goes to reserve, most often tax stabilization and or capital. So under the current process, we just used three municipalities, simple numbers. So we're budgeting for supplemental revenue of $180,000. It comes in overall between the three municipalities at $220,000, $40,000 surplus. That goes to the county and it's retained in the one-time funding reserve. Under the proposed process, the same three municipalities, municipality A comes in $20,000 higher. B comes in 20,000 under and C comes in 40,000 over. We would write a check to municipality A for $20,000. We'd write a check to municipality C for $40,000. And there's no repercussion to B who came in under budget. And that would result in a $20,000 county deficit that we would have to fund from some means. Typically, we would be taking it from a reserve. And just a few comments on what could be done to improve the assessment role because the question has came up. So MTE has done an assessment role audit that was participated in by all the member municipalities. And I will say with the exception of the City of One Sound because they had paid for their own audit, they had went out to procure the service prior to the county signing with MTE. So we paid for the audit and it's to improve the quality, accuracy and completely completeness of the assessment role. There's minimal work to the member municipalities and that was the goal when we asked the local treasurers whether they were interested in this service. Because it wasn't to shame and blame and it wasn't to create work for them because they're all busy. We know that. So MTE runs analytics and they could produce a report that says here are the anomalies and it might be something that looks like it's in the wrong tax class, something where the assessed value looks very low. All the anomalies. And so what they will do is they're going to send a spreadsheet to your treasurer. And it'll have a list of properties that they recommend that they will work with MPAC to review. So the local treasurer says yes, no, or no, I know why that one looks this way. It's fine. Oh, by the way, here's a couple I think they should look at. Can I add those? MTE will work on the behalf of the member municipality. And then they're going to report back in the fall, providing updates on the changes to assessment and revenue as a result of the audit. The other thing that MPAC has come out with is it's a new tool that they're calling permit pulse and they're working with two municipalities, I believe locally right now. So it provides municipalities' building department with the permits counts issued. And what they can do is compare this against their permitting system and work with MPAC to reconcile. So if they believe that they've submitted something and it hasn't come on the roll. Or they'll say, you know, we we should have more. That's between them and MPAC. The question has come up before. Could the county participate in this? The response is we don't have your building permit information. That's between you and your your building department and your treasurer. And quite honestly, the county shouldn't be meddling in your business there. MTE can also provide an analytics on permits to advise of areas requiring attention. I didn't get a price on that. In the call, it was mentioned and I didn't get a sense from the member municipalities that they were interested in the county pursuing that. Thank you very much for that. Turn things over to counsel now for questions or comments. Counselors, whoever.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. And I want to thank staff for this report because certainly it's, you know, revealed a few things that we weren't aware of. In fact, that the there was an audit done of by LTE of all the municipalities and there were reports shared with county. So I really appreciate staff moving forward. That initiative, that was something we brought to county council, a resolution from town of Blue Mountains, February 25th, just over a year ago. And at the time, county council voted to receive our recommendation for an audit for information and did not my motion, my amendment to have staff direct directed to undertake an assessment of the potential shortfalls was not passed. So I want to thank staff for having the initiative to go ahead and do that in spite of the council. And I think it's very interesting. And for those of you who haven't read the report for your municipality, I think you'll find them very informative. We thought we were doing quite well at the Blue Mountains, but the report did indicate some additional opportunities to find additional assessment and you know, we started this, this term of council in the Blue Mountains. Prior to that, the previous three years, we have captured 65% of the value of our building permits. Over the last three years, we've captured 169% of the value of the building permits largely because we've been catching up and looking at land that has changed classes. So that effort to move up from 65% to has if we had stayed at 65% every year, this this county would be receiving $2 million less in tax revenue at the current tax rate. So that's $2 million every year that that effort to increase the amount of assessment we find is producing for county and and that that represents about a 3% on the county tax rate. The county rate tax rate is 3% lower today because we we went on that campaign to find our messy missing assessment. So, you know, I urge all of the other municipalities, regardless of how the motion goes, to you know, follow up on this report. You'll find the reports very interesting. As Mary Lou said, they they don't reach any conclusions as to how well you're doing. They're merely a listing of all the properties where there might be opportunities and I was surprised how many there still were in the Blue Mountains. So that being said, everything that Mary Lou says is correct. And there would be some impact on county finances. But what is not there is the fact that if we all work really hard at finding the missing assessment, we'll have more revenue in the long term. And that the transfer to the community improvement plan is for the one year only. But that assessment stays on the books forever. So even though, yes, you've given up the access that the municipality found for the first year and that does have an impact for that one year. Because this is a powerful incentive for lower tiers to go find all their missing assessment. That additional revenue will be there every year going forward. And it will not be returned in subsequent years. It's just for the first year. So you know, I think it is a powerful tool and it's not leaving the county. There's the money, the money is going into a local community improvement plan. And these improvement plans are designed to benefit not only the lower tier, but the county as a whole. And that's all I have to say. And once again, I thank staff for taking the initiative and going forward with the audit of the 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 tax rolls to to be able to demonstrate to the local municipalities how much there is to find.
Thank you, Counselors, whoever. Counselor Mackey, you're next.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I too would like to thank Kim and Mary Lou for bringing forth this information. I feel like I need to apologize for not asking for this information before I made a decision to support this a couple of weeks ago. No decision should be made with a report from from our staff to know what the implications are. So I appreciate that information coming forward and I've changed my mind. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Councilor Mackey. Counselor Desai, you're next.
Thank you, Warden. It's I I didn't support this last week and I still don't think I can support this. I do want to think. I, I didn't support this last week and I still don't think I can support this. I do want to thank Kim and staff for, for the quick turnaround in this report. The question I have through you, Warden Hicks, to Counselor Sever, he mentioned. Towards the end of his presentation, if you will, he mentioned that. This, this would be. A fairly strong incentive for municipalities. To go looking for, for these gaps. My question through you, is it not a strong enough incentive? That the municipalities also see an increase to their revenues, not only for that one year, but for. Years following that as well. Because if I understand this correctly. Municipalities also benefit from increased assessment. So whether they get the. Supplementaries back from the county or not, there, there is still a strong incentive for them to go looking for. For any missed, missed assessments.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. I'll go to Mary Lou perhaps and then I'll go to Counselor Soever for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So, yes, to start with Counselor Desai's question. Yes, there is incentive for all parties involved to make sure that the assessment role is accurate and complete as possible because we all benefit from it. MTE with respect to Counselor Soever's. Comments has a developed analytics tool that looks for certain things that perhaps. It's easier, it's a fairly quick turnaround for them to do this work, to identify the anomalies. And just to go back, it, it isn't as simple as I would ask the local treasurers for their budget number for supplementals. Because if I was in their shoes, I would give me a conservative number. Because I want to generate money coming back. So what we would be doing is we would be doing our own analytics here to come up with a number. We would consult the member municipality, but ultimately the budget number is the county's budget number. And the other thing I was going to mention was, and I didn't mention this in the presentation. Previous years, we've had MPAC and MTE present as delegations at the same council meeting to give updates. And I don't know whether that's something that council would be interested in.
Okay, Counselor Soever.
Yes, and I want to thank Counselor Decipher's question because one would think. Logically that municipalities would focus on finding all of the potential revenue that they could find. However. When. I decided to run for council and I'm a first-term mayor here and first-term, you know, politician. This was one issue that was brought to my attention by a former employee of the. What was prior to MPAC, the Ontario Department of Finance, that did the taxation that. The focus is not generally on and he said there is a lot of missing assessment in the town of Blue Mountains. So. This was something we focused on and we looked back and this is a very crude. Analysis of comparing building permit numbers. You know, the total value of building permits to the amount of supplemental that was found. But, you know, that ratio, those numbers is an indicator and. Yeah, as I said, for the previous three years, in the Blue Mountains anyway, that was at sixty-five percent. And had we continued at that rate, we found. Five hundred and eighty-one million dollars of assessment. That we wouldn't have found had we continued at that rate over the next, these last three years. So that's five hundred and eighty-one million dollars. Now, that's a very rough number. But the first year, of course, we found. Over an extra million dollars of revenue that we were able to source for the town. Just because we were catching up and the first year our supplemental was two hundred and seventy-two percent of the value of the building permits from the year before. So there was a lot to find and, and Counselor Desai, not all, when you compare. The numbers for the other municipalities throughout Ontario and in Gray Bruce, which is easy to do by accessing the Midas database. Of FIR data, you find that. There's going to be a lot of municipalities are actually worse in terms of the ratio of. Supplemental to building permits than the Blue Mountains was. And so there is a lot out there. And I would ask, how much time did you spend locally? On the revenue side of the budget when you did your budget meeting? And I, and I find that generally, the revenue side is overlooked. So I think there's lots to find. But LTE has done an excellent job in detailing where you might find it and it's in a very. Extensive report that was shared by county to your finance department. So. I think that will maybe help you with. Determining what potential there is in your municipality.
Thank you, Counselor. So ever. I'll go back to you, Counselor Desai, but I would just ask you to keep your remarks as brief as possible.
No further questions. Thank you.
Right. Are there any other hands, any other questions in the room? I do not see any hands in the room and online, no. Hands as well. So time to call the question on the motion before us to receive Mary Lou's report for information. Understand? All right. All those in favor? And any opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. So we will now go back to. Item six A, we had pulled. CW three nine two two. So we're going to go back on. That item. Do we need to put that up for Counselor? It's in your package. It's in the minutes. Yeah, so it is the motion that was the item three, excuse me, CW three nine two two, which is moved by council so ever and seconded by councillor Boardignan. With respect to. That, we all voted on municipalities, those that we work with MPAC to capture all assessment. And that all lower tier municipalities have well-financed community improvement plans. And it was that motion resolved in any year in which a lower tier delivers more than its budgeted amount of supplemental. Taxation is projected by the county budget, such excess revenue would be contributed to lower tier and go towards their community improvement. Plan. So that's the one that we're either voting to confirm it or to not confirm. Am I correct? Okay, is there anyone needing clarification about that at all? No, okay. Yeah, we do need a, thank you very much. We need a mover and a seconder to get things going. Moved by councillor Millen, seconded by, looking online. Councillor Boardignan. Okay, so we're ready to call the question. All those in favor of the motion as you see, yeah.
Mr. Warden, I'd like a reported vote, please.
Very good. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. So you are voting on the original motion as the warden stated. Councillor Mackey. Councillor Mackey is opposed. Councillor Gamble. Councillor Gamble is opposed. Councillor Burley. Councillor Burley is opposed. Councillor Carlton. Councillor Carlton is opposed. Councillor Little.
Opposed.
Councillor Little is opposed. Councillor Desai.
Opposed.
Councillor Desai is opposed. Councillor Patterson. Councillor Patterson is opposed. Warden Hicks.
Nay.
Warden Hicks is opposed. Councillor Columbus. Councillor Columbus is opposed. Councillor Kevaney. Councillor Kevaney is opposed. Councillor Body. Councillor Body is opposed. Councillor O'Leary.
Opposed.
Councillor O'Leary is opposed. Councillor Woodbury. Councillor Woodbury is opposed. Councillor Millen. Councillor Millen is opposed. Councillor Soever. Councillor Soever is in favor. Councillor Bordignan.
In favor.
Councillor Bordignan is in favor. Councillor Robinson.
Opposed.
Councillor Robinson is opposed. Councillor Hutchinson.
Opposed.
Councillor Hutchinson is opposed. The motion is lost thirteen seventy-seven.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we are moving on to item nine now, which is the bylaws. We have a bylaw five three. Five one three zero dash two two, which is a bylaw to adopt and amend number ten to the county's official plan. Affecting lands in the municipality of West Gray. I need a mover to put the item on the floor. A move by councillor Kevaney, seconded by. Councillor Desai. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much. We're on to item number ten now, which is good news and celebrations. Councillor Millen, you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and it is my pleasure to say that I'm happy. To remind everybody that on this day in eighteen ninety. The first female Canadian Member of Parliament was born. I am, of course, talking of Agnes McPhail. She was first elected in nineteen twenty-one and subsequently four more times after that. I'm proud to say that she's an ancestor of mine, however tenuous it might be. I'm sure there are others that will claim that fame as well, but she was, of course, born in the former township of Proton, which is now Southgate. So I'm very happy to acknowledge her contributions to both Canadian politics and Canadian. Betterment. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, Councillor Millen. I'm sure if I look back and look hard enough, maybe I can find a connection to Agnes McPhail as well, which would be good. No, thank you for that. Anyone else? Councillor Mackey.
Mr. Warden, I just want to thank staff for the removal of the fish bowls. It was so nice coming in. Well, actually, I came in here yesterday because the county was kind enough to donate the facility to the Grace Alba Conservation Authority. So that was wonderful. But it was, you know, lovely walking in and not seeing that and seeing all my colleagues faces without masks. So it's. Really nice to be back to our state of normal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councillor Desai.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I'm surprised councillor Millen didn't. Mention the Maple Fest happening somewhat soon. I don't have the exact dates, but I'm sure he'll talk about it now. I also want to point out that Agnes McPhail also has deep roots in Gray Highlands. The great, great municipality of Gray Highlands and. Coming to Gray Highlands, we had the Junior Farmers Dance this past Saturday, which was, as I mentioned two weeks ago, the first in-person event. That, that has happened, I think, in Gray County anyway, since. Since the before times, as I like to call them. It was a terrific event, great attendance. And. It was, it also served to make me feel old because a lot of these. The young people, the junior farmers at this event were kids who I served at my family restaurant. When they were in grade nine and here they were enjoying adult beverages and, and whatnot and. I think I realize how councillor Millen must feel now. Thank you, Warden Hicks.
Okay, we're going to leave that. Councillor Robinson, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I do want to acknowledge that Agnes McPhail has a significance in West Gray and certainly. The, the town of Durham as her elections were conducted in, her successful elections were conducted in. The town of Durham in our old Durham Town Hall. I also want to. Remind members of council that AMO is providing various training sessions that are, are coming up and certainly there's a symposium next week. As well today, the federations of Gray and Bruce, the Gray and Bruce federations of agriculture are conducting the politicians meetings. As we speak, I had an opportunity to participate early on and looking forward to any information that, that is provided. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Robinson. Next is councillor Boardignan.
I thank you, Mr. Warden, through you. Yesterday in the House of Commons, our MP Terry Dowdell rose to talk about the first. Ever international film festival happening in the Blue Mountains, June first to the fourth. This event will attract international talent from location scouts, film producers, directors. We have hired, the village has hired Helen Dupont from Palm Springs Film Festival and other international festivals. To bring this world-class event for the first time into the Blue Mountains and that was acknowledged in the House of Commons yesterday. And this event, from a, not only from a tourism, but an economic development standpoint, will really put. The town of Blue Mountains and, and the county of Gray onto the map in the film production as Minister MacLeod said today, the. Film and TV production revenue in Ontario doubled from her original estimates and that was during the period of COVID. So we're quite excited about that. It was great to be recognized in the House of Commons yesterday by our MP. Thank you.
That is very exciting news, councillor Boardignan. Thank you for that. Next, councillor Body, you're next.
Thank you, Warden Hicks. I was, I was kind of feeling left out because of course we all know that Agnes McPhail went to school in One Sound. That was where she was educated and that was her start. But I'm not related to her. All kidding aside, I looked up this once, Dr. Bethune, who is a national hero in China. I think was in grade twelve with Agnes McPhail and Billy Bishop would have been in grade nine or ten at the same time in the same school. You got to wonder who that teacher was or who that influence was that told them all that they could do whatever they want and accomplish whatever they wanted in the, in the world. Yeah, and it's because of One Sound. Yeah, and, and, but some of my friends will point out the smartest thing they ever did was leave.
Thank you for that, councillor Body, and I'm sure that we have significant records in the town of Hanover. With respect to Agnes, her visits to the town of Hanover, which were. Duly recorded. Anyhow, councillor Body, did you want to mention at all about the wifi sticks that I hear are going to be available in the Own Sound Library?
As best I can, yes. The, you could go to several people around the table, of course, because it is the. North Gray Union Public Library that includes. George and Bluffs and Chatsworth and, and Meaford is involved. So, yes, they're going to be offering. Some kind of a contraption to allow people to sign out, take home and, and hook up to the internet for temporary periods of time, which is kind of neat. You know, when you think about it, we used to talk about things on modems and we don't talk about modems anymore and just how advanced we are even with. Being able to sign out books from the library electronically and. And, and borrow that it's not all on paper anymore and how that. Union Library with, with everyone that's involved in there has pushed it ahead, the education that goes on there, et cetera. So. One more step to make the rest of the world available to citizens in North Gray. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Desai, you're next.
I just wanted to point out Gray Highlands Library did the internet sticks first. Just on the record, we, we did it through our budget deliberations last year and. And while we're talking about libraries, I also, I think I've been remiss in not mentioning that our long-serving. CEO of our library retired in December, Wilta Allen, after almost forty years of service, if I'm not mistaken. To the cause of libraries in Gray Highlands. And our new CEO, Jennifer Merely. Has taken over, she had some time, a short period of job shadow in Wilda and has since taken over and. I am really looking forward to the, to, to the amazing steps that she's going to be taking. Forward with the Gray Highlands Public Library System. Yeah, thank you. But just so everyone knows, Gray Highlands did do the internet sticks first.
Well, thank you for your statements, but I think councillor Patterson, I'm not going to invite her, but would probably take issue with, with that claim.
Hanover Public Library has been using the internet sticks for quite some time, so.
Counselor Millen?
Just a reminder that the Maple Fest in Holstein, the optimists are presenting it and they're happy to after two years of absence. April 9th and 10th, Counselor Deci, write that down with a marking utensil. So you don't forget. I'll see you there. And I'm almost surprised that Counselor Deci would know what a library looks like, let alone know what goes on inside. So.
We all had to get our 40 hours somewhere.
No, no need to respond. We've had our moment of levity and I did say at the beginning, we want to move on with the agenda. So we'll do just that unless there was somebody else that had something burning to say. Good. We're ready now for adjournment. I need a mover. Moved by Counselor Mackey, seconded by Counselor Patterson. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing none, that is carried. Thank you very much. We'll just take a quick second to switch over to committee of the whole, grab your materials. Got mine.